The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
November the first, we'll please stand for our pledges of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm sure that all of our, all the people had opted to look at the agenda. And at this time, we would accept an approval of the official agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I would like to add for your consideration an item or two to the official agenda. The item I want to add is update on the situation surrounding the Frank Jones subdivision on South Montgomery Street to get us up to date on that and perhaps with some action tonight depending upon the report. The second, I would also like to add to the agenda and update from interim planner George Rumble and/or Chief Administrative Officer relative to the status of the comprehensive plan. So those two items I would like to add.
And I have two, Mr. Mayor. One, just an update on the parking situation on Lynn Lane. We had a brief conversation with the city engineer and I think they've got some good status update and just like to hear that this evening. And then also, an update on the city plans for the trash bags that have not, replacement trash bags, I think would be the best way to say it.
Replacement trash bags, like where Alden, which one of the agendas?
We have, as a city, of course, delivered about thirteen thousand trash bags and this year, several residents in my ward have not received those bags and I believe there's several reasons potentially for that and just want to get an update on where we are with that as well as what our plans are, if any, for replacing those bags and perhaps I'll be depending on that information and be requesting a board approval for, for action.
Let's see, I believe that we had two, two requests, two individuals requesting, one for that on the, George is part of the planner on the updated comprehensive plan and also Jones's subdivision.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, let me ask the colleague in what way, this might, this is the matter that was before the planning zone, what is it you want the board to address tonight?
Alden Perkins, I would like to hear a, a formal report on what occurred at Planning Zone Commission and then depending on that report, I may have a motion in that regard.
Mr. Mayor, just to explain something, I move that the generally approve this, I mean with additional items.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes, thank you. If you'll note on the table, I had several things that were listed here. The first thing is from my friend and Mr. Parram who would be facilitating a retreat for us and that if you'll find all that information that was placed on the desk here. And he has a questionnaire that he says that he can, we can probably cut the retreat down to about a half a day if you fill this out and we get it back to him as soon as possible. The suggested week that he has is November the fourteenth, eighteenth. We have a board meeting on the fifteenth and some dates that have been suggested is maybe the sixteenth or seventeenth. Do we have any thoughts from anybody in regard to that?
Mr. Parram's situation with his wife having undergone surgery has stabilized somewhat, so he's now in a position to try to make some plans with us on the retreat.
And we feel like instead of a day and a half that we may be able to do this in a half a day, if we get these forms filled out and sent back to him. So if you'll look at that and maybe by tomorrow, let us know what your availability is for either the sixteenth or the seventeenth and we'll try to go from there and set up a, a timeframe that will be suitable for everyone. If you also notice, we have a Mississippi Forest Commission in which they have just recently given us a grant of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. They're going to have a, a small reception here and we'd like to know your ability to say attend at November the third at ten o'clock, that would be, Thursday, first, third, would be Thursday, I believe, morning at ten.
And so this is a change from the earlier level that we had got?
So if you take a look at that and I had, one other thing I wanted you to look at, I think it was put in the boxes, it was a letter from the university pertaining to the transportation situation. And then I will have a letter forthcoming to you to consider Friday, next week sometime, Mr. Cox's situation on the Monday week in regard to a response to that. Do we have any board members that have any comments this time? That moves us then down to the approval of the minutes of the regular recess meeting of October the eighteenth. Do we have any corrections?
I have just one or two very minor ones that I wasn't able to provide to earlier, but I see no other reason, if we can approve these minutes, basically with those corrections and any other minor corrections, I move that we approve the minutes of October the eighteenth.
Second. We have a motion with a second that we approve the meetings of October the eighteenth. All those in favor, please raise your hands with minor corrections. Thank you, that passes. That brings us down to the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to be removed or have a minor question that we have at this time?
Mr. Mayor, the document on the consent agenda that provides the responses to the municipal compliance, of course, I said on the table, but, but that is a part of the original one that will be taken into consideration.
Yes, that will be made, the corrected one will be made a part of that, yes.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
I will read the consent agenda, I excuse to just say what's on the table, Roy. Are you talking about the list of elected officials?
Yes, sir, that doesn't, incorrect address.
How does this work?
Yes, sir.
Approval of claims docs for October, approval of September financials, approval then of the adoption of governmental accounting standards board, thirty-four threshold for capitalization as recommended by the city accounting firm of Watkins Board and Stafford, adoption of the municipal compliance questionnaire responses is drafted by the city clerk's office, approval of the payment of the brick fire pass through funds if they are provided from the funding agency, electrical apartment approval of local of twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from power connectors to provide communication system for the implementation of the electric apartment substation SCADA network, approval of the change order in amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars for installation of additional bay door near the loading dock and the necessary electrical work to allow for the remote open closing of this door at the new warehouse building. Fire department, permission for Marshal Roger Mann and Fire Marshal Stein McMullin to attend a range guard class in Memphis from November fourteenth to fifteenth. The police department requests authorization to allow animal patrol officer Richard McKee permission to attend the National Animal Control Association training in Atlanta, Georgia, October thirty-first, November to November the fourth. Public services department requests approval of the city to provide a panogenic, antigen vaccinations for water sewage employees, request approval to retain plumber Cavalier sprawling engineering for deployment of dead documents for the Curry Street pressure filter plant rebuild.
Mr. Mayor, did you re-lectured the form?
I did. That's for the power door and the?
No, the hiring, pool of the hiring of the two gentlemen in this service to read that. Personnel, did I miss something?
It's not on the consent agenda, Roy, it's, so, unless you're looking, it's not different.
When you're looking at, Roy, you're looking at last week's agenda?
Well, no, I'm gonna give, look, the one I have in my pack, but go ahead.
Uh, because it's not on this consent agenda that I read, it's on your piece of?
Go ahead, I don't have it, go ahead.
Those are the consent agenda items that I have at this time. Do we have a motion to approve, approval of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as is.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, please say, raise your hands. Okay, thank you. Six to one. Make it seven to one, no, no. Six to one. That brings us down to the, the regular agenda. The first thing we have on our agenda this evening is a comment from citizens.
Leading to Mayor and Board Chairman. Citizens have a few concerns. They are wondering when will the sweep of Starbucks sweeping the streets? It's very congested now. I've almost failed twice. Feet get tangled up and brush. I'm gonna leave some pictures here of Jefferson Street. We have four businesses on that street, taxpayers, and they're, they're sitting on their hands waiting for what we're gonna do. And that's concerned, I feel.
I noticed one thing on Jefferson Street that you asked me about, that they've taken a section of the sidewalk up to improve it because it was slick or apparently rough or something like that. You remember you asked me about the cones down?
Yeah, and they have?
Taken a bad section of the sidewalk, it looks like they're getting set up for.
They finished that today.
Did it, good.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? We'll move on. I'll start with planning, George. If you can address the updated comprehensive plan and also the Jones subdivision situation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I met with Shelley Johnston for about three hours this past Friday to address concerns that I had concerning the comprehensive plan, a way to expedite to get it done, primarily because of the fact that I have not been able to find any notes of minutes, meetings, dates, or anything else as to how the plan is constructed. However, I have gone through the goals, objectives, and principles that are contained in the plan and they seem to be valid and very good. I've asked her to take it, take comments from the citizens addressing specific issues that I have received comments on as far as policies are concerned, so I'm asking to bring before you at the next meeting, the text of the comprehensive plan, which if you elect to do so, we can hold a public hearing and pass it at the same time if it is at your pleasure. The other aspects of the comprehensive plan that I have concerns with and are working on leveling out because of the fact that some of them are by resolution and some of them are by ordinance. The future land use plan, I have, and I would appreciate it very much if you would all come by my office, I now have a big map drawn up with the modifications and adjustments and changes, none which are major, but I think it makes the map clearer in relationship to the policies that are in the text of the comprehensive plan, Mr. Parram, as how the map will eventually look. Now those two, I think we can, I would like to get the text out by November, the map by the first meeting in December, appears to be everybody's satisfaction. Hopefully tomorrow or Thursday, we will have the new draft policy on the web in case anybody wants to look at that. The other items, as far as what the consultant prepares for the city, I feel need more study and refinement and modification, specifically the update of the zoning ordinance, the proposed design standards, and the historic preservation ordinance, and the update to the landscape. I have some concerns, or mine, nothing major, because all of the bold ones are there, they need to be fleshed out, they need to be addressed, and more than anything else, they need to be formatted as much as possible within, within what we have right now, particular how they relate to all of the other ordinances that we look at, relate to this, particular the function of the planning commission and the site plan review committee, and how all of these work to support and how we can expedite the process when necessary. These are all contained basically within what is going on inside the zoning ordinance, it says, functions of the planning commission, and various committees come about, for example, the board of adjustments, which we are having two items coming before that this month. That's, that is basically the status of it right now. I want to get it in, Shelley and I had a very good conversation and she said, all right, I will correct everything. I've given her everybody's comments that I had made to correct. And I have added and corrected a lot of them, good notes back with it. And so, that is my work plan now on that, Mr. Parram.
This version of the comprehensive plan that you, I believe you said would be available, was it tomorrow?
Hopefully tomorrow, or I have yet, I have yet to receive the desktop for, for Al to put it online.
Will, will that be considered our final draft?
Unless someone has major opposition to it. There were just, as, as many of you have very generously commented on corrections and additions that could be made, I tried to make them and they very much appreciate it. On that, because as you all know, if you read this thing many times, it kind of starts running together. And if we had not spent, or the city of Starkville had not spent so much time on, I would say it's completely reforming, but we have it, this is the one everybody is seeing. So, the resolution aspects of it will be before us. And hopefully, as I said, in December, the future land use plan, where it will, and hopefully, and this is one of the difficulties of GIS and putting it on, putting the map as large as it is on the web, sometimes it's very hard to get the overall perspective because if you back off from it where you can see the whole thing, it's really hard to read it. But then whenever you start focusing in on a specific area, sometimes you learn, lose the relationship to what happens around it. So I'm going to, I've, I've made about two copies of it and we work on it daily and hopefully we'll have that for you in December.
Mr. Parram, will the new future land use plan also be available online before the December first, the first December meeting?
As I said, I hope so. And, and here again, it's a technical thing of transfer.
People will also be able to come by the building?
They will be able to come by the building and look at it. Because all of you that have been upstairs, I think most of you at this, upstairs, have, have, have been in our new renovated quarters, which were done in a very modest figure, I think, the effort that we achieved. And, please come and look at it, if you've got questions, call me, come see me, because of the fact that this is a major document and we need to get that out of the way. I keep running into citizens and say, pass the thing, so that's why I want to, but I want it to be correct, as humanly possible.
Oh, Mr. Rumble, thank you for that report and for your work to date on the plan. I think the board will recall our discussion at, at an earlier meeting about a procedure and timetable and so forth. I would still like to reiterate the, the board's order on this. I for one, and it was passed by majority vote, would like to get in my hand the final work product of the planning consultant that was hired, so we can say this is the proposed plan that Shelley Johnston was hired to do, with whatever changes she, with your consultation and advice, think appropriate into that final document. And then, of course, we would be able to take that final document and do whatever modification we thought necessary and appropriate. And remember, within that whole context was the scheduling of a board work session on the plan to make sure there is no misunderstanding of, among all of us, about what it's actually saying. And to that work session, we might or might not decide to invite Ms. Johnston to help co-chair with you a presentation of that. And then, once we have, you know, the final document and the work session, the intention was based upon the last board order that we schedule a final public hearing for any, any final review and comments, and all this placing on the website and so forth is excellent, of course, allows people the ability to access the material from the privacy of their home and then actually consider adoption of the plan and subsequently the component elements that you mentioned that might need some additional attention, zoning ordinance, design standards and so forth. So again, remember our intent, and somebody please correct me if, if I've misunderstood what our majority intent was, is to get a final document saying this is the final work product of our planning consultant. And from that, we will proceed with whatever modifications thought necessary and appropriate. And so, you're saying, as I understand it, that within a few days or?
Hopefully.
We should have what we call the final work product?
Final work product of the comprehensive plan, not the supportive ordinances and not the future land use.
Right.
And I urge this board to closely read and, 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 the councilman has generously volunteered to have approved of you as soon as I can get it to you, let's do this. And I suggest that you sit down and closely read the policies, the policies aspect of this comprehensive plan. This is the most important element. The goals and objectives are fine, but the policies eventually fold over into possibly future ordinances or something of that nature, but I'll try to have that to you, maybe because of the fact I want to get it out of the way, there's some other things I've got to do.
And the work session to facilitate?
Yes, and that will be?
The absence of?
If, if I can get you all a hard copy of the plan, then I think you should kind of be cold and figure out a time to say, and say, okay, let's do it.
Is Ms. Johnston willing to cooperate?
She seems to be.
I believe that Mr. McLaurin previously said two weeks ago that she would have us a hard copy that following Monday, and how many days did it take you to get up with her? Another week and a half, so it's not Mr. Rumble's procrastination that has been part of it.
Why is it so difficult for us to be able to have a week and a half expiration of time before we can get hotel consultant that we're paying?
We've already paid her, that's why.
That is the thing, now that she's already been paid, but we have not received the finished part, which is one of my frustrations.
Plus, she's had a mother that's been on the coast that she's been having to deal with too, and some other personal issues as such like that, but I think she'll eventually get these things resolved.
And I have no doubt that Ms. Johnston will not fulfill all the terms of her contract due terms of delivering those final work product.
Do you want to move on to the next item that we asked you?
I guess so, and I'm still operating under the impression that the board order in terms of the sequence of things will still be adhered to, basically even though the timeframe is now off.
In regards to Mr. Jones's property, the basic background and history was that it was on the October agenda for final plan approval, which it had been to the site plan review committee, and all of the department had signed off on it as being completed and not being established, which in many areas I took there were in working role, to the planning commission. However, shortly before the planning commission was to meet, I was informed that the inspections had not been completed on the sewers and there was a question from the fire department as to the turning radius of end of incomplete street, it needed to be increased for a fire truck and also a garbage vehicle, vehicle turnaround of that. So the planning commission removed it from the agenda, they did not table, they removed it from the agenda and went off. Mr. Jones came back at the next board meeting and requested a special meeting of the planning commission to address this specific issue. And the board instructed me to hold a, to call a special meeting of the planning commission to direct, to put that item back on the agenda to address it, to hold a hearing of it. I had difficulty getting together a forum, but I got together a core, but inadvertently didn't put a note in front of our city hall.
Or in the newspaper?
Or in the newspaper. So, the question therefore is, even though the planning commission passed it unanimously, is it a legal approval? Because it had already been on? Because it had already been on one regularly scheduled agenda, but it was moved from. So I defer to you with that.
Mr. Mayor, I brought this to the attention of the, I mean, inquiry about that point, you know, I want to make sure it's legally correct, and not against the matter itself, but it's my legal opinion that we have to reach the same legal conclusion. That's the opinion that we got from legal counsel on the matter of the premier radiology. There was a meeting of planning and zoning. The matter was passed, it came to us, but it was determined that there was no public notice. So in this instance, there was no public notice, there was no notice given in the newspaper, there was no notice anywhere, no notice in City Hall. And the motion, as I recall, it was a motion to request the planning and zoning commission to hold a meeting to discuss this matter. So the motion itself did not give a public in and notice. So it's just a legal requirement that we have to meet. And of course, my distinguished colleague from Ward Three, Alden McLaurin, brought that to the board's attention when we discussed the premier radiology. And what the board did was send it back to planning and zoning commission until they held a meeting in compliance with open meetings law, this codified in Title 25 of Mississippi Code. So there was no requirement of open meetings law. So, and if I'm incorrect, I'd like for our board counsel to correct, but I think my statement of the law is correct.
Correct. I have no argument with my learned colleague's statement of the law. In terms of this particular situation, what continues to plague me is that twice now, over a period of about a month, the city has aired in one form, fashion, or the other, the signature on the thing that shouldn't have been there because the test had been failed, the failure to properly notice the meeting. The meeting was held, the planning and zoning commission quorum there assembled, unanimously approved the plat. You know, enough time has passed, enough pretty much is enough on this. We have citizens waiting to get building permits and constant delay through no fault of their own. The planning and zoning commission has spoken on the matter, even though in an improperly called meeting. The planning and zoning commission is, of course, advisory to this Board of Alderman. Accordingly, I think we have delayed through accident or design enough. And so I would move that we give final plat approval to the plat for Country Club Estates. The planning and zoning commission having given unanimous approval in the specially called meeting, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you heard the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Gosh, I thought that's what we'd been doing. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, what we got to learn to do, we got to learn to follow the law. We got to learn to be consistent. We got to learn to follow procedures. What's good for one matter is good for another matter. Now, I don't have anything against this proposal for the board, but it's a matter of law, L E W law. It's a matter of procedure. Now, as important as the matter was for premier radiology, the board didn't say, "Well, the planning and zoning did that." They just said, "Well, we didn't comply with the open's meetings law." They remanded the matter back. It's important as the matter was to us. And I understand that the affected citizens want this approval, but the matter is not properly before us. I mean, if we cut and carve this exception for this group, what are we going to do for the next group? Well, are we going to follow the law with him? That's what the law is for, to make you be consistent. It keeps you out of liability, it keeps you out of trouble, it keeps you out of the courtroom. That's what counsel is here for, that's what he's here to advise us. Now, I understand, I don't have any issue with this matter. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I support the concept itself, but my point is from an attorney's perspective. I am an attorney, so I think legal. I mean, we need to make sure that we follow the law. You know, there can be plenty more people that's going to come before this board, or citizens, that are going to disagree with a decision or a matter or thing or process regarding the planning, zoning, or another promulgated board or commission or entity of this city. So the planning and zoning commission is just going to meet next week, a week from this day in this room. We're going to be back here in two weeks. Let's follow the law, let's be consistent. So as we make these decisions, we can be consistent. We don't have to show different treatment in different situations. The law presumed that if you treat people that are similarly situated similarly, you don't have to worry about a context of different treatment. And so that's what I am saying. And that's why I have opposition to this motion, because this motion has a tendency to treat those similarly situated differently. You don't afford a similar treatment. So, you know, the matter is not properly before us, there was no notice, that's a violation of due process, the public was not informed, no one was informed of the illegal, unlawful, improper meeting that was held by the planning and zoning commission regarding this matter. So I know that this is an advisory, this commission was an advisory body when it brought up the matter of the premier radiology. We may sure went through those steps. Matter of fact, as I guarantee to conclude here, Mr. Mayor, when the premier radiology matter came back, even on remand, the board, the mayor said, "Is there a second to the vice mayor?" Is there a second? We didn't even want to prove it then. And now we get a matter come from this body that's illegal, and here we are, we're ready to jet this to this meeting. So I make that lengthy talk to say that we need to be consistent, we need to follow the law, we need to follow the process, we need to follow the procedure. We're not going to follow planning and zoning, we're not going to listen to them, we don't need to have them. So, you know, I want to give deference to the process, I want to give deference to the body. And that's what we need to do. My feelings are not going to be hurt if I'm the only one to vote against this motion. I'm going to do what I was elected to do, and that is to do what is right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect again to my colleague from Ward Six, the board in taking action to give final plat approval tonight is not doing anything contrary to law. We have a situation that is different in both context and atmosphere than was the radiology clinic situation. Planning and zoning commission is advisory to this Board of Alderman. And as far as I'm concerned, with their unanimous approval in their last specially called meeting, they have indicated their concurrence. The city has twice aired in the consideration of this matter over a span of some four-plus weeks. For us to accept the recommendation, which it is only a recommendation for planning and zoning, that final plat approval be given is something that we should do. There is enough delay, we need to move on with this matter. We're not overturning planning and zoning, we're not doing anything. They have recommended it. And my motion stands.
Judge Mann.
I have one question, and I'm directing my question to our legal counsel. If we vote yes and vote this motion in, is that legal?
Is it legal?
Yes.
Yes.
We would not be liable.
But that's not the question, that's not what Mr. Perkins stated.
I want to know...
You legally, yes, you legally can vote it in.
We can legally vote it in, we would not be liable that we have violated the open meeting law.
Correct, because as Alderman Perkins stated, that's an advisory board.
Okay. Let's talk.
But Mr. Favor, one quick question, a couple questions for the record. You do agree that the planning and zoning commission is a public body, correct?
Correct.
And it has to comply with open's meeting law, is that correct?
Correct.
And it is also correct that they did not comply with open meeting law, said?
Correct.
Thank you.
And you would also agree that it was not even necessary for planning and zoning commission to need to even consult on this matter?
That's a policy decision that you, Board of Alderman, have decided upon, it's not for me to speak to. All I can say that they are an advisory board, and they have no way to tell you what to do.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor that has been second, that we approve the plating of the Joneses Country Club, Sun Vision, whatever. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Five. Thank you, Mr. Rumble. This brings us down to the mayor's business. We need another authorization for the extension of the emergency status for the city of Starville. I believe, Ms. Brule, that we still have police detachments and some other folks that have been going to some coastal areas, is that not correct? Until we quit going to some of these particular areas, I think that we need to have an emergency status in order to receive funding.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant authorization, extension, for the city of Starville for additional seven days.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify. The reason why we're requesting this extension of the emergency services is because we're sending personnel down to the coast. And I'm still confused about who is actually reimbursing us, and it sounds like we're going to request the government reimburses, but it doesn't appear that the emergency still exists in Starville, the emergency exists in the other area. But I just wanted to, you know, dotting the line...
Correct, we're responding to the emergency that remains on the coast. And this is out of, using Alderman, Vice Mayor Perkins words, an abundance of caution that we would get reimbursed. The plan right now, as FEMA and MEMA have indicated to us, is for us to get reimbursed by the cities who are requesting us. But were that to be problematic for reasons that we don't anticipate, then this covers us for us participating in their relief effort.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, thank you. The other item under the mayor's business is a thirty-day extension of Northland Cable Contract. Ms. Brule, would you like to address that?
I can, very briefly, in your package, there should be a letter there from Mr. Early about a ninety-day extension, and I was recommending to the board that rather than give us that lengthy time, I think perhaps it might be incumbent to give us a little shorter timeframe so that we would have a little pressure to get it done. But it's kind of the theory, thirty days with another thirty-day extension possible puts us under a little pressure to make it happen. So that's, he and I are planning on meetings, and we're both coming, we already met once, and we're coming back with more information to provide us with, so we can include that in the board package, if you're consideration.
Ms. Brule, they've been aware that this renewal's been coming up for some time, is that correct?
Well, actually, when I came on with the city, then I knew that it was coming up in November, and I sent him a letter, and we corresponded briefly, but then didn't follow up, either one of us did not, so it kind of came to this point. My neglect or my oversight, his as well, and so we're now close to the date, but this allows a thirty-day extension. Hopefully, we'll be able to manage it between, bring something to the board within that thirty-day timeframe.
Mayor, I motion that we approve thirty-day extension of the Northland Cable Contract.
Okay, we have a motion. Second.
Alderman Corey, I would suggest substitution of the words, non-exclusive franchise.
Okay.
Or contract.
The contract, I understand, is a non-exclusive, but it's...
Right. The contract, contract is the full rental contract that accompanies all of this.
I believe we have a, Corey, motion, Perkins, second. And do we have any further discussion just on the thirty-day contract extension?
Thirty days is a good start, I think ninety is a little long. I would agree with Ms. Brule.
If no further discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, so you're doing the lead negotiation, and then you'll be presenting to us what your recommendations are?
Absolutely, unless the board, we should have someone who gets involved. Basically, I'm trying to get Mr. Early to bring to us everything that he wants to present. We're getting our own research as to what the standard currently is in other cities and what other options we might have, so that the board will have some different choices.
And would it be appropriate to have you provide us with the current ordinance and then the current non-exclusive franchise agreement?
I can absolutely do that if you want it now. I'll do it.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been second, to add a thirty-day extension of this group of folks. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. That brings us down to board business and authorization for me to sign to propose fourth amendments to the MSU fire contract. If all of you had opt-in to look at that.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion?
We can just, just a couple questions about it. As it relates to the budget and personnel, by signing this contract, are we required to hire an additional person?
Chief, you know...
Yes, I have a part of the contract.
The timing on that may be part of...
Not immediately, but we'll have to go through the hiring process, the board and see if...
And then, the type of person, do you have a kind of a rough estimate of the type of person that we're going to need to hire from a step and grade standpoint? My back to the envelope estimates would be about this person...
The fire marshal position is, I think it's thirteen-one, I think it's thirty-four thousand. If we have qualified people inside, if not, the last time we hired a fire marshal, we had to jump back and go with a fire inspector at thirty-one, bring him up to his qualifications, and then bring him onboard as a fire marshal, so...
And so with benefits, it's roughly around forty-five thousand dollars for this new person that would be required as it relates to them by the contract?
Forty-four thousand is something that's total budget impact as far as salary benefits, and that's what was in the contract. And then, the department itself will pick up on the computer and that sort of thing.
And if we're roughly at about a hundred and fifteen thousand today as it's in the contract, and we add this one forty-five, just wondering how we came up with a hundred and sixty-five thousand for this next calendar year as an appropriate figure? Are you comfortable that that compensates us for our providing fire services to them?
Yes, it's actually a hundred and fourteen thousand this year plus the forty-four, and then the two and a half percent increase, actually each year if we go up five percent, two and a half of that will be the increase of that, the other two and a half will put in there to get paid for the ladder truck over a period of eighteen years, which is not much, it's going to amount to about thirty, forty thousand. But that is a little bit to help us to supplement for the ladder truck.
And then, will this impact us from having to buy additional, and perhaps it's what you were just suggesting? What other budgetary impact should we be aware of if we approve this contract?
Basically, office supplies, computer, that sort of thing, desk.
Okay. And I, right now, I guess the way, when we approved the budget, we had it based on the old contract of one fifteen, and of course, we didn't include the headcount for the person. So we'd need to, at our next budget opportunity, do an amendment for an additional person as well as for the additional contract fee. And I guess the way the contract works, we don't, we're not actually reimbursed from them until the end of the year, even though we're providing services and this type of thing.
Exactly. In other words, we bill them for the break this year, the way we're filed.
And last question, you're comfortable with this, both from what we need to provide fire protection to the university and also comfortable with the financial arrangement?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. That brings us down to departmental business. Chief Administrator Officer, you have several items on the agenda, Lee.
I do, Mr. Mayor. We were planning on taking up the Lynn Lane trash, actually not Lynn Lane, the trash bag issue at some point?
Yes, would you like to add that to your part of your department?
No.
All right, we had Sharon Boyd.
I'll have to call on some assistance when we...
Okay.
Well, if you'd like to join me, you may, we could do that first. Let's just take up the replacement trash bags. And all of the cops, I know we've all been receiving calls, I know the sanitation department has been receiving calls. And we are in the process of trying to determine essentially what happened. I know, I don't know about each one of the board members, I know I got my trash bags, but someone further up before Steel Drive did not get their trash bags, and they said that the entire street did not. We also have Hillside Drive, which I believe did not, someone University Drive that did not, and someone Chapin, as well as, oh, there's one other street, I can't recall the name. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's another one.
Ms. Brule, there's Lynn, I also miss City, you see the bags.
I'm sorry.
There's someone on Loomis.
Okay. Anyway, we've had a rather wide, widespread rash of bags that have turned up missing. And we're attempting to determine exactly what happened. We are currently investigating that now. And until we do, my recommendation would not necessarily be that we do anything about replacement bags until we determine if we can find the ones that have gone missing. And we think we have some leads in that regard, and I don't know how much I, I'm going to let this board boy take over from me, because I'm not sure how much she wishes to say at this point.
I'm not sure how much she wishes to say at this point about it, and we're just attempting to run it down and deal with it, and we'll certainly bring it to the board, but until we determine what's going on, I'm a little uncomfortable giving you much more information just because it's an ongoing investigation, shall we say, like CSI or something.
Mrs. Brohl, I guess just to make it very briefly, the bags were delivered, and they're not there, so we're just investigating it, and then you'll get back to what's.
Our current understanding is that the bags were perhaps delivered and then moved from the delivery point, but I'm not really sure exactly what sequence of that was.
Ms. Brohl, it's my understanding that, you know, every time we distribute things, we have occasional people that say they didn't get their bags, this is not the case at this time, we're talking about entire streets.
Much more widespread, yes.
That are, that are missing garbage bags this time around.
And, and Ms. Brohl, these bags were delivered by staff, this is probably on a weekend one.
And, and Mrs. Boyd attempted to do that to her credit and people's credit, on a weekend when people would more likely be home to receive them, as opposed during the day when you know, or work day when you know people are not home, so, they would put in overtime and make special, see the bags.
We're talking about just a street that didn't get bags?
A number of streets in areas, Hillside Drive, Hillside Drive, I'm sorry.
The whole street?
Yes.
What is the length of that street?
It's not just one street, it's several streets, several neighborhoods.
Then, we had a street that didn't get any bags.
We have several streets that didn't get, did not get any bags, and some that were delivered, two or three houses got bags, the rest of them didn't get any bags, only two or three residents got.
And what have we gone about looking into what happened?
Chief Sis, I mean, Chief Sis, Chief Lindley is on the case as far as, at this time, we are protectors, we're, like she said, we investigate, we want to come up with a conclusion, I want to find out who, where, and get it solved, so it won't happen again, and as a matter of fact, whoever it is, whether, whoever, will be prosecuted, because that's taken too much time, of the city's time, and the input of the sanitation department is demoralizing as far as I'm concerned.
Only this one particular street, I believe, was cocked on by, how many bags were supposedly left on that street, and none of them showed up to be relevant?
Which, which Hillside Drive, I believe? Hillside is what you referred to?
Well, yeah, Hillside and Chapin, but I think.
I think, let's go with Chapin, Chapin is one-way street, I believe there's twelve houses, residents on Chapin Street, dead-end street, so Hillside is also a dead-end street on both sides, I didn't give a count on that, on that, I just took down the whole, when they started calling it, it was a whole street.
Is it a possibility that the truck delivering the bags just accidentally missed that street?
No, sir, they didn't miss, I can, now, only thing I'm going to tell you this, they know the routes, and they know where they're supposed to go to, now, I'm not taking up for them, I'll take to that point, they know where they're supposed to be going to, because they ride that truck, each, each, our resident, our laborer, knows every route, who's handicapped on that street, whatever, they know about it, now, if for some reason it's in-house, I'll find out about it, if it's outside, and someone's getting, I'm going to find out about it, and like I said, they will be prosecuted, because I'm going, I'm going to see to it.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate the, kind of the behind-the-scenes, my concern is really the citizen, and we have, do you have a list of as of right now, who has not received their bags?
Yes, we have.
And apparently, does that exceed the current supply of replacement bags, or unutilized bags, or unused, undelivered, what is the order?
At this particular time, we only have, like, fifteen rolls, we count fifteen rolls, those rolls, five hundred are still for apartment companies, some of the apartment companies have given out, like on Lewis, we have not given them all out, you know, also, there are these a thousand, a thousand was ordered for departmental use, fire department, the humanities society, people at that, at City Hall, they faxed in how many cases they need, fire department, there's all, how many fire stations, so if they get eight or nine cases, that's what that's for.
But if, if for example, we moved, took care of our external customers, citizens, at the expense of the, our internal customers, would we have enough bags to replace all of the customers that we currently know who have not received their bags?
If they're one that's causing.
And just so that, y'all's recommendation was not to provide them with replacement bags until either an investigation, et cetera, would there be any risk to us going ahead and providing these citizens their bags?
I mean, that means we have, you know, if you, if you wanted to do that, we either have bags that we would have to purchase at some point for the city, or else, you know, we hopefully find the bags and reclaim them wherever they might be, and then we have them back then, so, you know, whatever the board wants to do.
Does it require a motion for us to, maybe we know it all in agreement?
I mean, are you talking about distributing what we currently have?
I think for these areas that, that are out there where we know something is amiss.
Something is amiss.
I agree with Alvin Cox that we ought to go ahead and do something, if at all possible, to take care of that situation, and if it requires us to come back, and I'm sure that people find some money in the budget to order us some extra garbage bags around City Hall to take care of our customers.
Perhaps we could be a little more conservative with our.
I would like to put in, let you all know, is that goes to the weekend, is that we work, they were not just thrown in the yard, they were taken one at a time up to the door, that's why I've, I've been telling people, contact and make a police report, because once we give them out, it's on your property, someone comes on your property, it's trespassing, and it's still ain't from your property. As far as giving out the rest of the bags that we have right here now, we do, I would, if, if they could wait for just a little while, give me seventy-two hours if I have something out, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty close to what's going on. But if, if the goal, however, of the board is to provide bags no matter what, then it certainly will not hurt us to go ahead and make the distribution, and then if we find the bags that we lost, it, it, it depends on what the board's pleasure is.
A distribution to citizens that don't have them should not affect the investigation of what happened to the bags at all.
No, it won't, it's more a matter of, did we give, it's philosophy, did we give them to them, once we did, how responsible must we be for them, you know, if the neighbors stole, you know what I'm trying, it's a, rather, a line, you took the garbage.
I, I understand.
Did one person say, "I did get my bags and called the neighbor, said, 'You need to call me, you should not get your bags,'" and it, it, boom, right?
I understand totally what you're saying, Ms. Brohl, but at the same time, this is somewhat different, I mean, because every time we distribute garbage bags, we always have an occasional one-walk call, or, you know, my very first board meeting, Mr. Turner and his citizens concerned talked about this very problem, but this is much different than our occasional hit-or-dress thing.
It is wrong.
Right, and to buttress our records, I see nothing wrong at all with if a citizen says, "I did not get my bags," asking them to please sign up of this saying, "I did not receive my bags," would like a set of replacement bags.
Thank you.
Oh, now, I didn't say anything about filing a police report or anything, I said signing a statement.
No, I'm just saying.
Just seemed to say I. Right, and that would help buttress the case here.
Did we feel like we needed a motion in regard to distribution to the citizens that have not received bags yet, or would you like for our administrators to go ahead and say, "Work this issue out," see if they can not resolve the issue as quick as possible?
Well, I'd like to see them do it, but as sure as I say that, then somebody will say, "We need a motion," so, I move that sanitation department replenish the bags that are missing to all of the citizens of Starple.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second?
No, just to the affected area.
To the one, to the affected area.
And do we have any further discussion?
Do you have a time in mind, Alvin himself, on, on when we would be able to commit to these citizens, because I've got a long list of people I need to call back tonight.
No, I don't have a timeline, I would leave that, well, with the department, as soon as possible.
Okay, well, we'll probably end up, we will do that, Mr. Mayor.
You know, Ms. Brohl, I'm going to go ahead and support this motion, but if the sanitation department has taken meticulous time in delivering these bags, and I'm not just in favor of just utilizing the taxpayers' resources and giving them more bags, so, you know, I mean, hopefully, and hopefully that precautionary measures are being taken once these bags are delivered to safeguard the keeping of these bags at the appropriate place, so hopefully, you know, we won't have to keep doing this, but of course, every time there's a distribution, we do have an issue about missing bags, but this is not, nothing this large scale, I'm really in favor of following your recommendation that we do the investigation before I support this motion, I'm going to go ahead and support it, but hopefully the citizens will, will take it upon themselves to, to know and read the paper and listen to the board meetings and look for public information that wants these bags delivered, and make sure that they go out there and get their bags, because I mean, I do that, other taxpayers do that, we need to be physically responsible so we don't duplicate taxpayers' resources, but it, but I don't know, just a matter of prudence, I'll go ahead and support it.
And once we get the, like, we do a very detailed report of exactly what happened, then? I wouldn't suggest that the city always expend such resources, but I think as a courtesy to the citizens in the face of a supposed garbage bag bandit, I think.
Any further discussion, if not, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It's a hundred percent, thank you. Ms. Brohl, this brings us, I guess, consideration of orders creating a cemetery commission.
We had a parking issue on, I believe it's, we got banned on parking on, which is not really Lynn Lane, but is Spool Industrial, oddly enough, is that correct, Mr. Brills? It's Spool Industrial, I think.
Road and dark road.
Right, okay, and the chief, Chief Lindley and Mr. Webb went out there and visited that particular area this morning, I believe, and perhaps on a couple of other mornings, so if they would be so kind as to provide you the results, their insight.
Yes, ma'am, we visited the site at one, of course, there was no soccer going on and no, no activity at all, there was ample room, it appears for people to park on both sides without causing a problem, if they get off the, of the road, we didn't see any parking problems, there may be a conflict with one of the property owners in that he has eighteen wheelers coming to and from his business at night sometimes, and they have, he expressed to me that they have a problem with the attorney motion to get back in these trailers into this loading dock, I haven't been out there on the nights, he questioned tonight being one of them, I thought I might run out there tonight on the way home to check that situation, and as far as the parking problem, there seems to be a large area on both sides of the park, and if people will take care to get off the roads and they shouldn't have any problem with the park.
Okay, I want to say, I don't understand, this has been two weeks ago when I asked for this to be looked into, and now we're just doing it today?
Well, we, we can only bring it to the board today, so.
Well, it can be brought back to my attention, because the people in my ward is calling me, this is the second week that I've been called to come down there and look at this, it is a very dangerous curve, it's got nothing to do with Clayton Richardson, I guess it alleged that my connection with Clayton Richardson has got something to do with it, it does not, all you have to do is go down there on the nights that we have activities, and it is a continuous rotating of people in and out of their parking sockets, and people are parked to the point where if they can't get in and out of their own automobile, that's how tight they're parking there, now, all it's going to take is in the curve, which I have made some suggestion of what we could do, and all it'll take is one kid run out between those cars into this curve, and somebody come down the car, the curve it can't see and hit a kid, and it could be avoided by simply putting a full post with a twenty-five or fifty-feet distance across that bridge where kids can come across and they can see oncoming traffic, and oncoming traffic can see them, I mean, I, the thing about it is concerns me that we are talking about something and you're admitting, Bill, that we haven't even looked at on the conditions that I have on two different occasions, due to the fact that the soccer people are calling me from the field and want me to come and look at it, and I feel that we are obligated to give these people an answer, and I hate to say, "Well, we just hadn't got around to looking at it yet," so I'd like to, to see somebody take the position of looking at it and just say, "Big safety," all we have to have is one kid get hit a run over back there, and then we're going all regret that we didn't do something about this.
So, so the problem is, is not that they're parking, they're parking too close to the bridges where the children are coming across?
Yes, so this is a solid line of traffic all the way across, in front of that bridge, and on the other side too, and if one lane of traffic, it can come around that curve.
Well, I'm going to go out there soon as I get to here, so, I'll, I'll get that weekend.
That's a huge crowd of people that come to those activities.
That's what, yes.
Okay, any other discussion pertaining to the bridge of the parking? Mr. Webb, you're going to look into that matter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us, I believe, I had that in the engineering department, and you pull that out of the engineering department?
I apologize, I just put them out of.
I see, okay. I think that brings us down to consideration of a cemetery commission, does it not?
It does, this will be the, the second time that it has come before you, and I'm just attempting, as I had said before, we've got a cemetery out there that, for which we're responsible, and we don't seem to have a lot of, a lot of oversight in the sense that we're not coordinating oversight, the board, a commission, the Starple Cemetery Association, while they have done a masterful job over the years, are not really, they are not answering to the board, there's no direct connection there, so I was attempting to make the board and city more attuned to what's going on at the cemetery, and the approval of the rules and regulations is a part of that as well as creating a commission that would watch over it and then report to the board, for land that we own, obviously.
Ms. Brohl, you recommend to the board that we have a seven-member commission, one member from each ward, just to regulate one cemetery?
Well, it's more to regulate land for which we are responsible, it's like having an airport board for the airport.
For one cemetery?
That's the only cemetery that we own, yes, yes, sir, yes, the answer is yes.
Mr. Davis?
No question.
Oh. Okay, do we have any recommendations from the, all the people?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, maybe I should work to the motion, I just have a problem voting for a cemetery commission, just for one cemetery. So, my question is.
Well, whatever the board would like to do, I would like some guidance from the board one way or the other about how they want to handle land that is owned by the, owned by the city that we are then selling off, and it never seems to come to the board for approval, which is one of the issues I think we need to look at, as well as the financial element of it, there are a lot of pieces to be covered, but I certainly would like to see someone take on, or something take on, that being a commission, to have oversight. But it's the board's pleasure, whatever you want, and Ms. McArthur is here, and she's the one who really, again, is by requesting that there be some rules and regulations associated with the cemetery, so it's two separate pieces, if the board wishes to create a commission, or if it just wishes to adopt rules and regulations for the cemetery as it currently exists.
Ms., I'd like to ask real quick, Ms. McArthur, would you have, do you have anything you would like to say concerning the formation of a seven-member commission for the cemetery?
I always applaud good organization, and I think maybe the cemetery falls in the category, we're not real well organized, we managed to survive, but the thing that concerns me more than anything else is that the city has only allocated money for the mowing of the cemetery, which is most appreciated for those of us who own lots, my concern is if you create a commission, you're going to have to fund that. is if you create a commission, you're going to have to fund that. The monies that are being spent in the cemetery are not tax monies. They belong to the, to the Starkville Cemetery Association. We have rehabbed that cemetery in the last six, seven, eight years with private monies, and that concerns me. I do not want to see above all else the cemetery go back to the condition that it was ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven. We are pleased with where we are at this moment. And that doesn't speak to the commission.
And, and the only reason I brought this forward is because, aside from the fact that the rules and regulations were an issue, but it is, the cemetery does belong to the city, and it is our responsibility, and so that's the reason for, rather than having a private organization take on a particular burden or task, it seemed to be appropriate that the city take on its responsibility for something that it obviously owns. But whatever the board wishes to do.
Mr. Perkins, I would just like to ask, do you think that it would be acceptable then if we had a commission of less members, or do you think it's a matter of the number of members in the commission, or the commission itself?
The establishment of the commission itself, and for the purpose in which the commission was established. Two things.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask something? Oh. The problem that I have with this is that I know that the city own one of the Art Fella cemeteries, namely the one on University Drive. But there is also within the city a historic Art Fella cemetery that is on the registry. And no, it's, the city does not own the one on Martin Luther King Drive, oh, one eighty-two. And it's not because the city has not been asked to take over the upkeep of that cemetery, as well as the Art Fella cemetery on University Drive. So that's why I have a problem, and some of my constituents have a problem with the city doing upkeep of one cemetery and will not take on the responsibility of the other cemetery. And both of them named Art Fella Cemetery. So if you don't give an address, like we have here, that just says Art Fella Cemetery, who's to say which one you're talking about? And that's the problem that I have with this.
Ms. May, I'm gonna go ahead and go on the record further to kind of curb what my colleague from Ward said. Ms. Elba, point of clarification here. Are you saying to us that the Art Fella Cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive would like to deed the cemetery to the city?
Yes. They have offered, and, and the proposal was made to the previous administration that they would quit deed the cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive to the city. I know that.
I'm not disputing that at all. I can say with certainty that the previous administration never received any information at all about that particular subject.
Maybe the whole administration didn't, but I know that that proposal was made.
Oh. All right. I would move then that we take this matter, continue this matter under advisement, and further direct the chief administrative officer with whoever's thought necessarily appropriate to check with those individuals presently running, for lack of a better term, Art Fella Cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive, to ascertain the willingness of the, the group to deed the cemetery to the city. And then we may have a cemetery commission that deals with two cemeteries, if indeed that, that be the case. I would add, Ms. Elba, just for the record, and this does not, of course, speak to those years that you were talking about, but I know of considerable city involvement in the, of, of maintenance and upkeep of the Art Fella Cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive back during the days when Ms. Sadie Weir was sort of the, the lead spokesperson for that particular cemetery prior to her death. Lots of things, and it was, of course, my privilege to make a brief statement to the group there at the designation of the historic marker at Art Fella Cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive. But in any case, I would recommend we take this under advisement, and let's, let's see where we stand on all of this.
I'll second, I'll give it to Florence.
We have a motion with a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of the, of motion, please raise your hand. Taking this under advisement, unanimous.
Was that to cover both items one and two, those procedures as well?
Yeah, don't worry.
Yeah, I'm rooting for what we rule it.
Okay.
That brings us down for authorization of, of certain, yes.
And I believe Dr. Plant is here to answer any questions. I had brought, I brought this to the board, Montmore, so about, and anticipated very minimal costs associated with it, but as it's become more obvious, because we need to have a larger number of students to participate in order to get this done in a timely way, then we would need to expend some funds. And so I brought it back to the board for your consideration of moving forward this citizen survey with an expenditure of, I'm not quite sure what it'd be, but approximately twenty-five hundred, so is that, I'm wondering, since?
Oh, twenty-five hundred, thirty thousand.
Probably, we will, that's again.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine, twelve.
Yes. And I think Dr. Plant spoke, so it's pretty much ready to go, and I provided y'all a copy of the, the latest number of questions in your box. It would be, it was in the box.
Corrections?
Questions, I'm sorry.
Question, actually.
Questions.
Corrections that you brought in?
Yes. The, the latest, the latest edition. It was in your, in your box.
Let me see, sure.
The survey question is on the table?
Yes, on the table. I apologize, I was thinking the box.
Just a question.
Well, did you make some questions about methodology? And that's another thing I'm gonna even come close to picking after those, so you don't have a special question.
Just a question about, would this be perhaps more effective if we mailed these to, to every citizen in South Florida via electric bills, for example, to have a greater survey base? Would you be comfortable with a smaller sample on a phone survey?
Take the students' answers, if they're doing these, or they're there.
When it comes to mailing surveys, you have with the return rate, because a lot of citizens don't return it. With, we use CATI, which is computer-assisted telephone surveys. And when you telephone, you have a search sample that you want to get, which is about three hundred for the size of the city. And when you call them, you call it to you, get that three hundred, and with that way, you're able to get a random sample, and you're able to get the data from the, from your question.
Y'all, y'all are gonna try to get a three hundred sample size for the city of Starkville?
I mean, it's, it's a sample size.
Right, honestly. No, I'm saying that's a big number for, for some of the city of Starkville, because I believe the entire Mississippi poll does, what, six hundred respondents for the entire state?
Six hundred is for, uh...
And I'm saying that's, that's good. I, I was impressed with what we have. But I'm not arguing with you.
If I understood the response, it was that if we use a mail survey, we'll get a lower response rate per survey. But it would, let's say, twenty percent of the surveys, twenty percent of eleven thousand, or how many other electric customers we have, we might actually get a, a greater number of actual respondents.
It won't necessarily be random, because you may have some wards that send out more than others. And that's where we have a problem on a random sample, so we're able to get a good concise thought of what the cities, the citizens of Starkville name. So if you mail them out in certain wards, it's going to affect, you're just gonna get what that ward names.
And then from a, I guess, it's somewhat of a cost decision for me, because we, we have gotten up to, close to three thousand dollars, and maybe a little bit less than that. So it's, I'm just drugging a bit with the calls.
When it comes to cost, if you're gonna do private, it probably costs about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. We can do it for twenty-five hundred, twenty-five to three thousand, in that range. And that's just the cost of these students. We don't take any money from that. We have, we're overseen by professors, and a couple of administrators. It's kind of, we have a town building, we have them behind us.
Okay, we've heard discussion of this. Do we have a motion that we approve, that's been approved for the, the survey?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, we have a second. We have a motion with a second. There's Mr. Davis seconding there. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous.
Oh, did you vote for him?
Six to one.
Rubbing your nose, if you're raising your hand. Six to one. Uh, Ms. Broldus, that brings us down to consideration for authorization, and it to a great for telecom.
And this is something that looked as though it would be an opportunity for us to determine where we might find some savings. Mr. Quinn, Al is back here somewhere hiding, or not hiding. There he is, back, back there. He did the research for us, and that in your package should be some of the numbers that were generated, as well as the information on the group itself. He personally called UW, I believe, and...
UW and Rankin.
Yeah, Rankin County. And they also have some other lists in there of services that have been, or municipalities or counties that have used these services. It's, it's no cost in the sense that if they save us money, then we reap a percentage of the benefits. They reap a percentage of what they save us. If they save us nothing, then there's no cost to us. So I see it as a win-win either way it goes. So that's the reason we brought it forward, thinking perhaps we could get a considerable savings if we had someone with that expertise to look at it. If not, if it costs nothing, but perhaps a little of Al's time to help coordinate the information.
A little of Al's time?
A little of somebody's time. I assume it would be Al's time, because he's the telephone coordinating expert.
In the memo, it talks about all of our telecommunications bills. Is that across all departments, cell phones, land phones?
We have to look at all of it. That's, that's what they said that they can do. They even talked about utility bills, but upon doing a little further research, the utility bills themselves appear to be something that would be, an area that they would, of course, strictly the cell phone ones, strictly the communications.
And then the length of the agreement, though. It seemed like it was for twelve months, but then it talked about automatically renewing and...
Well, and I think that would be one of the things to consider. But, you know, from a savings perspective, any way it goes, we, we'll be to the good, so.
And then I know we're doing a significant amount of phone changes right now. Is there, what would the thought be around why we should do this now while we're in the middle of making all those phone changes, as opposed to letting that settle down?
Well, I was thinking, hopefully, it might educate us as to what some of those changes we might be making off the day to day. Before we implement them and then look at it, or implement them, look at it afterwards, we look at it, and perhaps there's some suggestions or some other ways that we might go that would be suggested by what they tell us.
If, for example, let's say you have ten lines currently servicing the city, we think based on your volume, you should only have eight lines. Is that the type of where they're gonna say that, well, we've saved you the cost of two lines? That's the type of savings? Or is it more the billing errors?
No, I think it's billing errors.
Yeah, it's gonna be more billing errors, errors of...
That's more of a management thing. I see this is more of, of billing errors and duplication of things. So, no, it was, it's not, it's not that. I would not anticipate that, no.
And that was really more of my point around, when they're in the middle of all these changes in our phone system, if we already know that we're gonna be consolidating phone lines, et cetera, et cetera, then we wouldn't want to give them credit for doing something that we've already decided. So if, if I understand correctly, this is just, they're gonna look at our bills and say, you shouldn't have paid for this charge that you paid last month? It's just someone's gonna be looking at our bills, not a professional...
I mean, on a, on a personal level, a residential level, I know that they can go in, or have officers going in to places that have, you know, larger systems, a complex and that sort of thing, or comfortable with the system, and say, okay, you've got call waiting, but it doesn't work because you've got X number of lines, therefore, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be using call waiting because it's uncertain in purpose, or whatever other, you know, additional service that they slide in. Put your finger on your phone, David.
Last question, just to understand it. I know we have multiple cellphone carriers within the city. Is that something they would potentially come in and recommend, that if you went to one carry, you'd have these savings? Or is that more of a management issue again, and that's not something they would do?
I would see that as more of a management issue than this. And we're beginning that process ourselves, actually. We consolidated our cellular sound bill most recently. And we, what we attempted to do, we developed SAV to look at this for us. But they've been, um, characteristically difficult to get a hold of and to bring someone in to help us with this. So this is an outside group to do what they'll accomplish. We can't seem to get them to do it.
From a personal point of view, I just think perhaps a little premature at this moment. I'd rather see our whole phone system settle down, and do some internal management things, so that these things won't cost us money with a group claiming, oh, we just did so, recommend so-and-so, and that saves you this amount of money. This could be a considerable amount of money, if you believe the literature that's in there. It's considerable savings. It does a considerable amount of money for their fee.
Oh, well, it would be only the savings that, but, but...
It would be hanging, but...
In the negotiation, I, I think that we would make sure that, you know, we tell them what we're doing, that it's not part of what they would be doing, and that would be part of our management of it. But, you know, whenever...
How can we really do that until our phone system settles down?
Well, and I'm not sure what we mean by settles down, because we are, I mean, we've gotten our phone system set here. We're gonna get supposedly at some point in time a receptionist to be answering phones, but that's not, that's not a change to what we're doing in this fashion. So I'm not quite sure what settles down. What is, what is in particular that you're referencing is, meaning settles down?
I thought we were changing lines, deleting lines, adding lines, all sorts of things in this whole concept of, of the new phone system.
That, because we've had those two lines, and we have three more lines that we're gonna get rid of. So we'll have all that taken care of before we, before this group...
You know, what we're doing, that's really imminent. I mean, we're, you know, and we're also, you know, looking at some other opportunities for calls, saying, do whatever you want. It just looks like an opportunity for us to, to capture some savings on things that require a little more expertise in billing and that sort of thing than we necessarily would have.
Like what, for example? I'm just a little puzzled here. They're gonna take a, a Bell Sound bill, and from that determine what possible?
Have you looked at your Bell Sound? I mean, I know we use the city, I look at, you know, I look at like, once every twelve months, and I go, oh, wait a minute, you know? I didn't authorize them to change me over to something else, sorry.
I look at it monthly, as we should be doing in the city.
Well, I, and we probably do. I'm not, I'm just saying that, that, you know, I don't, I don't recognize things that telephone companies do. And it was, I don't know, I don't know enough about it. It's like knowing insurance. You know, you get an insurance agent to know insurance details, for example. And that was a thought process.
You mentioned something about utility, is, what, explain what you're talking about in utility.
Associated with is nothing.
Nothing?
No, nothing. It was just one of the things that they said that they could look at utility bills as well, and we determined that was not something that would be beneficial to us, that perhaps telephone company charges might be more beneficial to us. But we can, we certainly don't have to do it.
I would move we take this under advisement, a little more study and, and information on it.
We got a motion with a second to take this under advisement. Any further discussion?
No, I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask, what, how much more, what more information would you like, or should we just wait until we get everything done that you want done and, and determine to come back at all? Because I don't want, you know, I don't want to bring you something that's...
And this might be a one-off committee thing, to, to, you know?
All right, okay.
We have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, put this under advisement. Please raise your hand. Six. All those opposed? Six to one. Thank you, Ms. Broldus. Mr. Webb, we have a report on Ms. Sanderson's drainage relative to, that you developed on the hospital road.
Yes, sir. In your package, you'll find a memo, uh, relative to what we're doing to address the concerns Ms. Sanderson has. I met with, uh, Mike Ram, who's been over there to hear the question. And, uh, he is doing, running some figures and doing some preliminary design to see if there's a possibility of, of feasibility of installing some small detention ponds on their project upstream, forced from, from the apartments. Haven't gotten back with me yet on that, but they are looking into that area to do that. We have some concerns about the pipe that was installed across it. It looks like, uh, there is a right-of-way that's there that is set aside for some type of roadwork. And, and the road's never been installed there. Someone is using it, uh, for access, and we don't know exactly who or what. But there's a pipe put under that road in the process of installing that pipe. Uh, they, they actually put two right angles in the ditch. They didn't go across the road bed with the, in the same ditch line that the ditch had been previously doing, or previously going. They turned it to minimize the number of joints of pipe. We feel like that, uh, first of all, we need to find who put it in, and then possibly go back in there and get it straighted so that the ditch will go back to its original, uh, shape. That would keep down the possibilities of blockages on, on both ninety-degree turns in the, in the channel and also erosion problems that would result, the result of the bins in the, in the ditch. But we're basically, uh, investigating the potential of some small detention ponds in the property. Of course, the ditch down below it needs to be cleaned out. It appears that, um, it's grown up with small trees and brush also.
Can you give us an example where small detention ponds have actually worked?
Uh, pardon? Well, Maple was working pretty good up until, uh, recently, uh, the last few years, I'd say. Uh, the one behind Penny's works very well, because that-
That's a much larger one, though, isn't it?
It's a large. If they're designed and maintained properly.
The one at Walmart, Lowe's is working, or Walmart, I'm sorry.
Uh, who would be responsible for maintaining these detention ponds?
Uh, I would say property owners. That's, that's who maintains the ones behind the Crossgate job shopping center. We don't have an ordinance establishing the need or the requirement for detention ponds. There was a, uh, stormwater suggestion made in the design standards, uh, that was, was part of the ongoing comprehensive plan. It, uh, of course, has not been adopted. Right now, we don't have a requirement. We channel try to lead the developers into doing detention ponds if we think there's going to be a problem downstream. But we don't have the ordinance in place to require that, nor do we-
Have an ordinance in place to make them change the, uh, pipe to where it runs where the channel?
Not, well, there is a, a rule or a law that you can't divert flow of water, which in this case, I think is natural to divert flow of water. And I think someone has done that. I don't, we're, we think that this particular piece of property, it was left for a right-of-way. But the, because it was going to the subdivision, that Carver Drive was going to extend down this right-of-way and go back into the land behind, south of this property. And, uh, the, the right-of-way is there. I think the original owner still probably owns it. It's never, has been dedicated to anyone. There's never been a road bed actually installed, but there, it's there for the future. So we're trying to track back down to see exactly who owns it and who possibly could have put the pipe in, in the start.
Am I correct, this is on private property? You talking about this re-rap?
Yes. That was best we can tell right now.
Mayor, Board, I would ask before you authorize any type of work on this, that I be authorized to go to the site and use this to make sure we're not in violation of section twenty-one nineteen thirteen?
Do we have a motion in that form?
In light of legal counsel's recommendations, I would move that we, um, take this under advisement till the next meeting to give Mr. Fager time to look at the site himself and make his legal recommendations.
We have a motion with a second.
Uh, just like to ask Ms. Sanderson, you, you looked like you wanted to say something earlier, and I just wanted to get a question.
Thank you so much. Yes, I, I look like, I do have a question. A retention pond, and, and the question was, if there's a retention pond, who's the, who's responsible maintaining it? And somebody gave the answer, it's the property owner. Well, as a property owner, uh, where a ditch is going across, which I had no problem from, and the, and the water that, that's going to be piped into there, is that the property owner that should be, uh, that should be maintaining a retention pond? To take care of the water that's coming from the springs on that land? Or, or as a property owner, the ditch?
Right.
The ditch where it's going to, if it's a load of water go back up? The creek behind my property, I don't own that creek. Uh, uh, John Gilbert owns that creek. So I don't own the creek. I don't own the creek. The creek is behind me. I have no right to go and do anything to that creek. I only have the mouth of the ditch that they're piping that water from on my property. So which property owner is responsible for maintaining a retention pond if that's what you choose to do? But I have driven around town and I have seen detention ponds, and I have not seen anything that looked like anything I was interested in having. I looked on Tabor, I looked on, um, uh, Maple, I looked at several of the others. They looked like nasty cesspools to me.
Uh, we, we, we're considering your concerns. The problem that we have, that we're, we would be in violation of the law if we went out there and dictated to private landowners what they had to do. Uh, we are not presently, uh, we do not are causing any runoff on the streets or any of those type of things. This is something that is actually being created, I believe, by a private landowner next to you. And that, uh, as far as the city's obligation to police as such, that's a little bit out of our ramble responsibility. Is that not right?
It's a, it's directly a violation of prop- I'm going to go out there and look at the site to make sure that I can report the board. And what I'm hearing, that's why I asked the question about private property, section twenty-one nineteen thirteen of the code says that we can't do any work on private properties to alleviate drainage problems unless it is caused by runoff on the city street. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go out there and the board's authorized me to do that, but I just want you to understand before I go out there what, and I'll be glad to show you the, the state law. This, these board members will be individuals live, if they authorized any city employees to go out there, they'd be authorized for the money expended for that. You understand that? But I'm, like I said, I'm with-
The retention pond that we're talking about?
They're, they're talking about retention pond. They're not talking about the city building a retention pond.
They're talking about, may building a retention pond when, when that water comes out of mine?
They're, they're talking about proposing alternatives to help the situation. The city is not talking about building a retention pond. Unless it's determined, as I stated before, that the city is causing this runoff. And I'll be glad to show you the state statute that I'm relying on if you, if you'd like to. Mr. Webb? Plantation homes runoff from, uh, the hospital. We built a rather significant, uh, concrete ditch because of this amount of runoff. Uh, we, was that just determined that that was coming from city streets? And the reason why we had to build that was because when we expanded the hospital, we, you know, added however acres of paved, uh, paved road and, and we were flooding out plantation homes, and then that one section right near Old Rembolden's house. I'm, I'm, I need to be educated on the issue, but I'm having, I'm struggling to understand the difference in that new development creating significant runoff and flooding versus this new development creating, and what responsibilities we do have, keeping in mind the, the legal issues.
Some, some of that particular water was coming directly off the, have on the north side of hospital road.
Mr. Webb, in that ditch, don't we own it or have business in that ditch? Or that particular drainage ditch in the, all the cars?
I, I would-
Rather than it be on, totally on private property?
Well, most ditches are on private property. Some we have easements, some, some we don't. Some we have what's called a restricted easement, and the water, the water's always running into ditch on, down that property land. And, uh, most of the, the ditches are fed not only by private property, but by runoff from city streets as well. It's, it's kind of hard to, to say.
I thought on that particular, you probably mean the project.
But I, I really would like to get, uh, any on this particular issue, uh, granted we keep going private property, do any building, or, you know, unless it's city related.
But the question that's being raised, uh, the comments being raised by Mr. Cox, he just wants to make sure that we're consistent. If, if we had the legal authority, he just wants, wants some reasonable explanation that if we, we did that on the north side of, of the hospital road, we should be able to do it on that side. So whatever, and I'm not familiar with this engineering concept here, but, uh, whatever the, uh, the, the past patterns and traditions, we need, we need to make sure we follow the same legal theory.
So, and that's why it'd be good for Mr. Cox to go look at that and be showing most scenario with him.
I ask you one quick question. In your letter to us, you, you say that there's a sixty to seventy-foot easement between Pearson Place and, uh, the Great Stone Apartments. Is that our city easement? Or is that?
I have found no evidence in the research of the property that it had ever been beaded over or set aside for the city. I think one time it was left there vacant for that purpose to actually turn Carver Drive south and look back around and come out back down further west. But that particular piece of property was sold, but I think the easement, or, or the gap is still there. I mean, we, we're not real sure who owned that. We can't find it. It goes back to the end of the sixties, uh, when, uh, I think we got money and sold it. But, uh, at one time, we owned the land behind it, but then beaded it to the present owner. And we, we can't find any, there's a gap in the maps, and it's hard to, to pinpoint exactly where that is, so we're still researching looking for it. But, uh, so I can't really, ain't keen answer that, but there is a sixty, seventy foot, uh, putageal right over there.
At this point, we've had authorization in form of motion.
Right, motion and a second.
Right, and second. Mr. Fager, go ask to examine this legally. We have further discussion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Mr. Webb, I, I do have one question before you get up, not related to this issue. Uh, would it be possible for you to contact anybody, or whoever can give us a, a, a traffic count and do some traffic counts at various points along Greensboro Street, Anne Whitfield Street?
I, I can get, I can ask them to do it if it was on the city, urban, eight urban systems. If it's not on their particular system, then they won't, I don't think they'll provide it for us.
Okay, if it's not on their system, can we get some traffic counts along those, and, and do it relatively soon? And, and because, as we've talked about before, you know, the court, new court coming in and, and possible impacts. And I'd like to have a, a nice baseline before the court goes in session.
They, they do, do some on Whitfield Street.
Okay.
The Greensboro enough.
All right. Well, do you think it'd be possible to get some traffic counts at various points along Greensboro Street so that we can have a baseline of information as to before court, and then after court, we can make, uh, uh, appropriate, if any, steps at traffic mitigation? Because I think everybody would agree that there's too much traffic coming down Greensboro Street to begin with, and I'd like to be able to-
They're actually making counts right now on, on some of those streets that you mentioned.
Okay.
Of course, it takes about ten months to get the counts from them once they compile.
To the gentleman, what, why, why is it necessary, or what's the rationale to have, uh, the traffic count?
So, I, I think it's always nice to have a good baseline of information to start. If, if they've said that there's the potential for increased traffic, it'd be nice to know, rather than just, uh, uh, a happenstance observation of somebody sitting on the front porch saying, man, there's a lot of traffic coming down my street now. If we had some before, uh, court comes to hit it, then after court, then we could say, hey, there has been a significant increase, and we ought to look at some, uh, uh, possible solutions. That, that's all it is. Not to bet you, you know, if we're going to, in, in our, uh, here's a plan that is proposed, we talk about traffic on Greensboro Street, and it's, uh, the volume of traffic down that particular street, and the, the need to try to have traffic mitigation on that street and divert traffic from that street. So I just think it'd be nice that we actually know how much traffic's on the street if we're going to talk about this, and so that's the reason.
I think we have traffic counts on Greensboro between Whitfield and-
Have, have they been done since the bypass, or are they pre-bypassed?
That's what they're, they're doing those.
They're doing that right now?
They haven't done any, they do them every once a year.
Okay.
Can you get that information to him?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us down to personnel. Mr. Cox, I think you're going to give us a report in regard to personnel. Short report.
Short report, sure. That's what the operations and organization committee met, um, earlier this week to interview, uh, prospective candidates for the receptionist position that was approved at the previous board meeting. Uh, we have very high standards for the position. This is, of course, the, the first face and the first voice for the city. Um, and, uh, the report at this point is that we're continuing that interviewing process and hope that our next board meeting will have a, a recommendation for the board.
That brings us down to executive session. We have two items there, potential litigation and discussion of personnel matters.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into closed session, turn the knee for taking session.
We have a motion, direct a second, oh, just a second.